I order the regular city commission meeting of Wednesday, April 16th. I would ask you to all to join me in the place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of Oregon and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask our representative Brent Barton to come forward. He's not here yet. Well, we won't do that. I know where he is, incidentally, but...
We can go and run down to his house.
Yeah, and I should take the roll call, too. I forgot the roll call.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Mum?
Here.
Commissioner Roth?
Here.
Commissioner Pauli?
Here.
Mayor Neely?
Here. And at the moment Representative Brent Barton is not here, but we know where he is, so he'll be here shortly. I'd like to read a couple of proclamations while we're waiting for him to come. One of them is the recognition of Grange Month. We have a lot of Granges located around Oregon City. In fact, we have at least one or two that are located within the city limits of Oregon City. Whereas the Grange Organization has served as a beacon of citizenship and civility since its founding in 1867, whereas social interaction and education efforts are the keystones that have allowed great achievements in nonpartisan legislative action and much-needed service projects of the Grange which have benefited the communities and states in which our members reside, and whereas our great nation has benefited from the Grange never forgetting that we were an order whose members believe in America values and hometown roots, and whereas the Grange has remained true to the ideal of developing a better and higher manhood and womanhood by ensuring that each member is given opportunity to rise to their full potential as leaders, as Americans, and as a contributing part of mankind, whereas the Grange includes all members of the family within our organization to meet, talk, work, and in general act together for a mutual protection and advancement, and whereas we, the values of the Grange are needed by America now more than ever, and therefore I Doug Neely, Mayor of Oregon City here by proclaim, April 2014, as Grange in Oregon City, and urge all citizens to celebrate Grange Month, support efforts to improve America through open discussion, civility toward those who may differ, and to grow as a person. As our order celebrates 146 years of service to America, we welcome those desiring to make a positive difference in the lives of those around them. I'll be signing this today. Is there anybody from the Grange who wishes to speak? Would you come forward, please? Which Grange do you represent?
I represent Redland Grange number 796. My name is Dick Walker. I live in the Redland area, and I'm also the president or the master of that Grange. And I have a few members here.
Welcome.
Gertrude Thomason, my wife Annette Walker, and Corey Hawkins. He's the vice president or the overseer of that Grange. And I have here Mayor Neely, and I want to thank you Mayor Neely and Councilman for giving us this time to speak to you. And I have here a little history of the Redland Grange State and National Grange. May I read that to you, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Redland Grange 796 was founded in 1931, celebrating 83 years of service to the community and small rural farmers. April is National Grange Month, celebrating 150 years of service. There are 177 active Granges in the state of Oregon. Clackamas County Promona, number one, has 16 subordinate Granges, the largest county Grange group in the state of Oregon.
That's awesome.
That's great.
We have 16 Granges who are very active. Our state model is in essentials, unity, and non-essentials, liberty, and all things charity. We meet once a month in our individual Grange buildings, and we have quarterly meetings with our county Promona, and one week each summer is dedicated to the Oregon State Grange Convention, which will be held in Redland, Oregon. Redland, excuse me. National Grange holds convention each November, and this year it will be back in Ohio. Redland Grange meets every second Thursday at 6:00 PM for potluck and a general meeting at 7:00 PM. Our doors are always open to new members, and we invite them in to have potluck and enjoy the meeting with us. One of our favorite activities is presenting books for the Third, dictionaries to the third graders. On a local level, the Granges in Clackamas County provide food, clothing, and bedding to the homeless and needy people in our area. Most of us do road cleanup once or twice a year. We strive to make our neighborhoods safe, clean, and friendly.
That's great.
Thank you very much.
That's wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. I appreciate that.
Dick, I have to give you a history. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
My aunt and uncle met at the Redland Grange at a dance in 1946. They'll be married 67 years in July. And I grew up hearing this story forever. Because she was from Portland and he was from Gresham, and I don't know why they were in Redland.
Well, we have some people that met at the Redland Grange when they had dances out there. And they've been married for over 50 years.
Yeah, yeah. They're been 67 now.
There's lots of history there. There's lots of memories there.
Yeah.
And anytime, any of you want to come out and visit us on the second Thursday?
You got any dances going on?
You can enjoy potluck with us and enjoy the meeting.
Yeah.
So come on out. We'd love to see you.
It's a little off base, but I've got a story to tell, too. My mother and father also met for the first time at a dance, and this was in Portland. And my father asked my mother if she would like a ride home. Well, this is during the Great Depression, and anybody with a car, that was great. So they left the dance hall together, and my dad walked her to the bus stop and paid the bus fare to her parents' house. And so they went together. Does anybody else want to speak? Thank you very much for coming out. I appreciate the invitation that you have extended me to visit your Grange and so forth. It's great.
Oh, no, no bad.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we'll go into the... Oh, now we'll come to our first slide, presentation by Representative Brent Barton. You see, you should have joined Jim Band and I, then you would have been here at the table there at High Cliff, and then you would have been here on top.
You know, Mr. Mayor, my father once told me that you judge a man by the company he keeps.
Oh, yeah.
I knew what he drives. It's okay. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, thank you for having me. For the record, I'm Brent Barton. I live at 410 Jefferson Street, and it's my honor to represent Oregon City in the House of Representatives. I'm here today, I'm passing out a PowerPoint presentation that I printed out. You'll note I don't actually have it on the computer largely because I'm sort of a Luddite. I'm not a very handy guy. I've learned that I can't get these wrong too much. Now, as I believe you know, when I do not serve in the legislature, I practice law. And what that means is that I'm actually trained to be long-winded.
Oh, good to know.
And I feel, but if however, I really try to finish my remarks in three minutes, I bet I can finish it in five.
You'll get five. You'll get five. So you can't have seven.
So the first thing I note is, there's also six copies in the back in the event anyone in the public wants to follow along. First one thing to note, my contact information. I do hear from quite a few of you. I hear from our city manager very frequently. I do appreciate that. And I hear from you, Mr. Mayor, and others. I keep that coming. I do enjoy it. Turning the page, the first slide, I'm gonna come back to that to the end because that's the only one I want to talk about at length. Then I'm just gonna highlight a few that you guys may wish to... Some Clackamas County specific ones with Chief Ben, of course, was the Robert Lipton Memorial Scholarship Act. I'd like to note, you guys have seen this yourselves, but Chief Ben really led his team and led that family with great dignity throughout a very difficult time. And it was certainly the most emotional experience of my public service career by an order of magnitude. Turning the page, there's medical marijuana, which is what prompted me to actually appear here this evening. I've never had so much activity and so many questions coming from the city. And I was right in the middle of that fight, so I might be happy to answer your questions. About Cover Oregon, of course, that's an ongoing debacle that the end does not appear in sight despite our promises. I'm starting to think, although it's up to the Cover Oregon Board technically speaking, I'm starting to think that the probability that that ever happens in a functional exchange as opposed to Oregon using the federal exchange, I'm starting to think it's not gonna happen. We're gonna be on a federal exchange, and that will be $200 million largely wasted. Turning the page, of course, I don't need to tell you guys about the Lemon Falls Legacy Project. It's... And there's been, there's just been a new ask, $4 million that we're gonna try and come up with for the first phase of the public access. I don't know, it's too early for me to tell how that's gonna go, but I will tell you that that's gonna be my top priority in the next session. And then 2015, I have some things, you know, a wise and prudent person doesn't worry about things that he or she cannot control. I, however, lack mental health and thus worry about these things a great deal. And should you, like me, want to worry about things about which you cannot control, that's a good list.
Yes, that is.
Particularly, and one I did not mention there that I should, that we should also worry about is will the kicker kick? That will send the state budget into chaos. That will, of course, affect the city indirectly. Anyway, so, having said that, I want to go back to the first slide, and then I will be done, be able to answer any questions you may have. First slide seems kinda boring. Why do I want to talk about it? I think I have serious reservations about how the legislature functioned in the last session. Oregon recently went to annual sessions. In 2010, the voters changed that. For the first 150 years of our state's history, we had biennial sessions. That was a very common form of government throughout the United States. Transportation costs were higher, and frankly, the business of government was relatively simple. That changed. Large states generally have professional legislatures now, i.e. full-time like Congress, that are paid accordingly. Texas is the one outlier amongst large states, I believe. And then about 20 to 30 years ago, most states in the unions, medium to small, started shifting from biennial to annual sessions. Oregon was a relatively late adopter in that model. In 2010, I believe we became the 45th or 46th state to have annual sessions. And Oregon, like many states, has a long session or regular session that happens an odd number of years. That's where we set the state budget. That's where a lot of the big sessions happen. I came and talked to you guys during that time. And then we have a so-called short session in the even number of years, which is what we just finished. Now, the short session, as I understood it, and as I think what the voters approved, was something for budget fixes, technical fixes, and other kind of consensus measures. The legislative process simply takes time. It's not really, it's not rocket science, but it just takes time for voices to come together and be heard, to take a good idea and refine it to something that can actually be enacted into policy. It's a discourse between parties, between interest groups, between constituents, between chambers. And it's, when it actually is done well, it's kind of, there's almost a magic in the air that I can't put my finger on, but it's pretty cool. It's not efficient by any measure, but it's pretty cool. And that simply cannot happen in a short session. And instead, we had proposals that I thought were kind of trying to be rammed down our throats, and by "our" I mean the people of Oregon. Marijuana legalization, Columbia River Crossing, OLCC privatization, other measures that are perfectly legitimate topics for debate. As part of the democratic process, we can and should debate them, but they are totally inappropriate, in my opinion, for a short session. Will just mess it up every time. And I can't get feedback from the constituents. That's why, remember during the medical marijuana, that's why there was such chaos going back and forth between me, the city manager, and the mayor and others. It just, it was happening too fast. And so I, for one, don't like it. And of course, I have a D next to my name. Democrats are in charge on there. I'm supposed to say we did a great job, but no, it wasn't that cool. And I don't like it. I don't want to go through it again. And I plan to introduce a constitutional amendment in 2015, and if that doesn't work, then a rule change in 2016 to require policy bills to have some kind of supermajority requirement in the short session. Say, two-thirds majority requirement or three-fifths. That's modeled on New Mexico, Arkansas, and Louisiana all have a requirement like that. And that's, I think, would be entirely appropriate for Oregon to seriously consider. So anyway, that's my one word of caution, I think, about the legislative process and how that unfolded. Having said that, I know perhaps the questions are already, I might be too late to answer questions on medical marijuana. I think you guys are already on top of it, belt and suspenders. But if there are any other questions I can answer, I'd be pleased to.
First, I'd like to thank you for coming out and speaking to us in terms of your activities. Well, we have had legislatures that came before us, they were on very specific items usually, and appreciate the summaries that you have come with us.
Thank you for having me.
I appreciate it very much. I appreciate the fact you live in this neighborhood. I think we've all felt that sense of frustration and the miracle, the medical marijuana that went, policy that went through did not satisfy us at all. Because I don't, unless there's a tremendous change, and as the next commission comes forward in their opinions, we intend to keep them, not issue business license for them and keeping them out of our zoning. We went ahead and adopted the moratorium simply, I guess, to be able to make a fallback position, but hopefully giving us, I hope, giving us some time to work with the many other jurisdictions that have essentially, well, we, I won't say we started, but we were one of the few first cities that came in and said we don't want the dispensaries here. There were others before us, but others have come in. I believe Milwaukee has now adopted one.
Like Tusco last night.
Like Tusco last night, yeah.
Yeah. And I think it gives maybe jurisdictions that do not want the dispensaries here the opportunity to put forward their arguments legally so that when the issue comes up again, we'll be in a strong position to say, no, you cannot mandate this on the jurisdictions.
Mr. Mayor, a few thoughts about that, if I may. I serve on the Judiciary Committee where this came through. I was right in the middle of that fight. It was not a pretty process. And the legislature ultimately could not reach a consensus, and we did what politicians do best, we punted until 2015. Now, in this commission, this city has been very clear and has truly been one of the state leaders. I think Medford has probably been the state leader opposing medical marijuana dispensaries. And Oregon City and perhaps one or two others has been right there behind it. So how is this gonna unfold? How is it gonna be any different next time? I've been thinking. And my colleagues and I are just, I feel like we've been talking over each other. And I think the question is this, let's pretend, everyone here, imagine on a scale of 1 to 10, I want you to rank yourself, 10 being you strongly agree, 1 being you strongly disagree with this statement, medical marijuana is medicine. Where would you rank yourself? Is that something that resonates with you, or are you, not really? Somewhere in between? And I think for my colleagues who strongly oppose the rights of local jurisdictions to restrict or enact moratoriums, who want this to be statewide, they tend to be, I'd say, on an 8, 9, or 10 on that scale. And those of us who are skeptical of this, that this is not a medical product like any other, that this is something that's entirely appropriate for local jurisdictions, we should perhaps regulate it more like alcohol than other pharmaceutical products. You know, I think we tend to be on the other end of that spectrum. And so the arguments that we're flying at each other, they're just not resonating, and we have to... I'm trying to find a way to try and bridge that graph so that we can at least have an intelligent conversation, because right now it's just not. We're just not communicating well. So that's what I see my personal challenge to be in 2015, about how we can at least have a productive dialogue in Salem about what this might look like. And I haven't figured it out yet. If you guys have any ideas, I really would appreciate hearing them.
Well, I mean, from our standpoint at this point, I mean, marijuana is not generally legalized in Oregon. It is for medical purposes. My argument, why did you develop specific dispensaries? Why don't you take them through pharmacists like other medications are?
Yes.
We'll know at one point or another where it gets, when it gets legalized in the state, and that'll be a different argument at that particular time.
I think this debate about medical marijuana will continue until, actually, the people of Oregon legalize marijuana altogether, which I don't, regardless of what you think that should happen, I think that will probably happen.
Yes.
Certainly in the next decade, if not five years, if not this November. And the dispensary system, the people of Oregon enacted the Oregon Medical Marijuana Act 1996. From what I can tell, I think it's quite popular. People of Oregon rejected a dispensary system in 2010, 58% of the vote. It's a decisive rejection of it, yet the legislature enacted it in 2013. I was the only Democrat to vote against it every time. And not for any ideological reason, the people, I'm trying to do what the voters want me to do, and it's pretty clear, I think, from talking to my constituents and just looking at the ballot box, people of Oregon don't want the dispensary system. Nonetheless, we rammed it through, and here we have this mess that I think was entirely foreseeable, and perhaps in part a symptom of some mixed messages that people of Oregon have been sending via the ballot box. Perhaps not, maybe it's just...
One of the things you might look at, if I might say so...
Yes, please.
That if, you know, if somebody pulled over DUI and you can administer urine tests and so forth, but the effect of, the fact is that that doesn't work, that doesn't work on marijuana.
No.
And to have some kind of legislation that permits that kind of evaluation of whether somebody is in fact driving impaired, I think has to be done.
If anyone wants to be a billionaire, the way to do it, the thing that there's a market demand for that's extraordinary is coming up with an easy, practical, measurable test for impairment for driving under the influence of marijuana.
Yes.
Basically, blood test is the most accurate way, otherwise we have to get DRE, Drug Recognition Experts in, as the chief can attest. It's difficult, takes a highly trained police officer to be able to do it. And that's the challenge. Washington and Colorado have approached this in different ways, both relatively arbitrary, from what I can tell. I don't, I don't have any good answers for you. I don't like the direction we're heading, but I do appreciate how clearly this commission has communicated kind of its position, and that really means a lot to me, actually. Because again, I don't have an ideological dog in this fight. If my constituents were telling me something, this is, we really need dispensary system, I, you know, I would listen to them and try and do what the voters want me to do. And so having, when there's this kind of a diverse commission, and there's that kind of unanimity, it's very impactful. I'm hearing the same from Gladstone, a similarly diverse council, and they are speaking with one voice on that. It's pretty clear, I think, where my constituents are.
I didn't know they were that diverse.
I think we have a diverse commission, absolutely.
Oh, I'm looking at you guys.
I agree. Our citizens are well represented.
That's true, but I think in terms of decision-making, we've almost always been able to come to a consensus on most of the things that are made for us.
Absolutely.
And not always, of course.
You can learn from that. Any other questions?
I wondered about Sasha the Gladstone Lynx.
Sasha the Gladstone, have you heard of Sasha?
Oh, yeah. That was all over the...
So Sasha the Gladstone Lynx, and as you know, Commissioner Roth, I am nothing if not a cat lover. This one was close to home. So there is a vet who has, has been medically diagnosed with PTSD. He has a service animal. In his case, it is a 16-year-old lynx named Sasha.
PTSD?
Yes. And it's actual diagnosis, that is not, that's verifiable. And Lynx is, you know, they're essentially large cats. Sasha has been declawed and is in a cage and is well cared for. They tend, they generally live to be 19 to 21 years old. So Sasha is on the way out, not a good candidate to be moved to, for example, a sanctuary. Exotic animals have to be permitted as a law that passed in 2009, and those permit process ended without exception in 2010. This guy did not hear about it. And so his possession of the lynx was illegal, and they were gonna take this guy's cat from him. And if there's one thing that's gonna pull at my heartstrings, it's a veteran, his cat's gonna be taken from him. Anyway, so, and that was, Senator Olson and I worked together closely on that. I got to know him a lot better through that process, and we actually changed the law, and so this guy gets to keep his cat.
Very good.
Well, thank you.
Yes, thank you. I didn't hear about that story.
You didn't?
I did.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that. Actually, it was a big thing, and everyone called it in Salem, the Gladstone Lynx. I got calls from the governor's office saying, "Barton, what's going on with the Gladstone Lynx? Why are you doing this?" Thank goodness. Yeah.
I thought it was gonna be the Jefferson Street Coyotes or something.
Well, thanks for helping with that.
Well, I appreciate the fact that you do keep us pretty well informed on what's going on in Salem, and that you do work hard for us, so I do appreciate that.
That means a lot to me, and vice versa. You guys communicate...
And you're very accessible.
You guys, you guys as well, and I know how hard you guys work.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have another proclamation, Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas in 1872, Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting of trees, and whereas a holiday called Arbor Tree, excuse me, you called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic viability of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, whereas the city and its Arbor Day partners, Oregon City School District, Clackamas County Soil and Water District, Raider Oregon City Watershed Council, Friends of Trees, and Oregon Department of Forestry have been working together to plant trees and educate the community about the importance of the urban forest, and whereas Oregon City will celebrate its second year as a Tree City USA with a growth award from the Arbor Day Foundation, now therefore I Doug Neely, Mayor of Oregon City hereby proclaim, April 26, 2014, as Arbor Day in Oregon City, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day, support efforts to protect trees and woodlands, and to plan and care for trees to promote the well-being of this and future generations, and I will be signing this today. We do, we do have Arbor Day coming up. We have some programs coming up, and it coincides with our First City Cleanup Day as well, which is, starts at, I believe, 9 o'clock is when we get together there at Clackamas, Clackamas Park. And I don't know if there are any staff members that want to speak to other activities that we're engaged in?
It is April 26, Your Honor, but I'm looking for the time. We have a bulletin here that I'm gonna pass out later.
Yeah, I think...
It's 8:30, it says.
8:30 is where you can go and get food and sign up, and then 9 o'clock...
The work starts at 9. The coffee starts at 8:30.
Get there early.
You should be sweating by 9 o'clock.
Yes.
That's right.
That's right.
Because of work. Or labor.
And Tony, I don't know if you want to mention one activity that's gonna be in conjunction with the school district or not?
We've partnered with Rotary Club, and we're gonna be doing some cleanup and tree planting out of McLaughlin Elementary.
So anybody know some other projects?
Yes. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, in honor, in kind of coinciding with this, the Parks Department has already planted over the last two or three weeks or so, something close to 30 new trees in a variety of different sites that have just been places that we need to locate some trees anyway, so that coincides with this as well.
And I guess, has it been about two years ago that we got the Heritage Tree Program? Is that roughly correct? The Heritage, Heritage Tree designation? So over the last two years, we've been actively doing several things, and I, and we've, I think, approved maybe about five or six heritage trees at this point. I might want to let the public know, if you have a tree on your property that qualifies, you can go ahead and submit it to the planning department for nomination, and then it comes to us, and what it does, it protects that tree through the title of the property, so that is, the property is transferred from one owner to the other, that tree will remain, unless, of course, it becomes diseased or something else happens to it, but it's a way of protecting, protecting that tree. Anybody else want to make any comments?
Well, I will comment. I live right across the street from Stafford Park, and I noticed the new trees that had been planted there. We had, I think, three that were removed because they were diseased, so they have planted, I think, five, so we'll get some good tree growth there.
Very good.
And we became designated as Tree City USA.
That's correct.
Yes.
Two years ago.
Two years ago.
And the trees that were planted in Chapin Park around the very hot walking path are starting to grow and provide some much-needed shade to the walkers and joggers, so that's great, too.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then we have Preservation Month photo contest. We're... We'll have the staff report. Christina? And Karen?
Thank you, Mayor Neely, Commissioners. It's another year, another Preservation Month Photo Contest. We've, in the spirit of cooperation and collaboration, we've been working really hard with the city and partnering with other heritage groups, as, you know, we are a heritage all-star community, and this has been a very successful project we want to keep continuing, and that is the Preservation Month Photo Contest with the Clackamas County Historical Society, starting May 1st through June 15th. You can enter your photos online on our website, which is orcity.org backslash planning, and we will be awarding the winners in the July City Commission hearing, and hopefully we'll have them presented in the Oregon City News like we have many years. And this, the theme of this year's Preservation Month is "A New Age of Preservation: Embark, Inspire, and Engage." So I'll pass it over to Karen, who'll finish out?
Yes, I'm on here. On behalf of the Clackamas County Historical Society, we are honored to partner again with the Historic Review Board. I'd specifically like to thank our sponsors this year. Citizens Bank is sponsoring the awards, and Old Oregon Photos is sponsoring us by printing the three winning photos. And when you submit your photos to the photo contest, you never know what might happen to them. And in my other job at the Chamber of Commerce, I had to pick out articles and cover photos for the new Around Town Magazine, which should be out the end of this week. We decided to do a feature article on the Kanema Bluffs' natural area, and the cover photo was taken by Carol Polly's son, who was 12 at the time, and inside in the article, it's illustrated by photographs from both her son and her daughter Gretchen, who at age 10 was our youth winner last year. So your photos could end up anywhere when you enter the contest.
You just never know.
And just to remind people, the preservation, the theme of the preservation photo is really anything that represents heritage to you, so it's really wide open. It's not just a photo of, you know, an historic house, it's what exemplifies heritage in Oregon City. And we have a beautiful photo from last year's winner, and it's kind of a coordination of our Arbor Day proclamation, but, you know, it really can be lots of different, you know, the winner before that was of our elevator, but I want to encourage everyone, we'll be sending out as much press release as we can, but starting May 1st, you can upload your photos on our website, and we will let you know who the winners are in July.
Could you remind us what the deadline of submission is?
June 15th. So it's May 1st through June 15th. Next City Commission meeting in May, I'll be back, because it is Preservation Month for the whole month of May, and we'll be presenting the Ruth Powers Preservation Award and having a proclamation, so I'll be back. But we wanted to do a little bit of a pre-presentation at this month's meeting, or this week's meeting, to let everyone know about the contest.
Also, for the viewers at home, there are cash prizes for the winners. The adult winner gets $75, the youth winner, which is 11 to 18, receives $50, and the, or, excuse me, the teen winner, the youth winner, which is 10 and under, will receive $25.
And who can't use some more money?
Well, I think what's so great about this contest is it allows us to see Oregon City through the eyes of our citizens.
Yes.
And see things maybe that we haven't, you know, saw before. And then you get lots of, we get lots of photos from it, too, so of our beautiful city.
I've seen wonderful photographs of things that I have to actually ask where they found that.
Exactly. Good job.
Thank you. It's a great job.
Thank you so much. Now we open the floor to citizens' comments, to anybody that wants to speak on something that's not on the agenda. I'll go check here if we have anybody. We don't have anybody at this time. Okay, come forward, Christina, and for something not on the agenda, right? Thank you.
Christine Kozinski, I live in unincorporated Clackamas County, and because safe and livable communities are important to all of us, I'm here with a problem. The traffic on Maple Lane between Holly and Beaver Creek is getting very unsafe. As a matter of fact, I left my home the other day on Holly Lane, driving toward Maple Lane, and made a right-hand turn. And when I got to Walnut Grove, I think it's Clearview or one of the streets there, a car passed by me, going into the oncoming lane, and came within inches of hitting the motorist. There's a lot of problems, and we have, since you've been building in Walnut Grove and Crabtree Terrace especially, there's more people walking on Maple Lane, going to the shopping center. In the summertime, a lot of kids, a lot of students, we're seeing more bikers, more walkers, and it's getting very dangerous, and I wanted to pass that on to you, and maybe we can come up with a solution.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask what speed that is posted on there?
It's 45.
Forty-five.
It's much too fast. And when we're coming again against that problem with, you know, an urban area coming up to more of a rural area, and even on my street, you know, that, you know, we've seen them go 80 and 90 miles an hour, way too fast, and I believe that there's a legislative law that does not allow us to lower the speed limit. We were able to lower Holly to 40, and I know the county was able to do that, but that's as low as we could go.
You know, we have that, I mean, it's the Oregon Department of Transportation that permits the changes in the, we've had this issue and made petitions before on Myers Road where, well, Lynn, I should say Lynn Avenue, particularly is problematic. It's curvy, there's no sidewalks, it's very narrow.
Yes.
And I see, I see more and more bicycles going down there, and more pedestrians now going down there as well. It's an issue not only outside the city limits, it's an issue within, and I hope we can approach, hold on again, about some of the issues we have within the city.
It would be good in the next session if we could get the legislature to understand the problems on our roads that are so close to the urban areas.
Absolutely. More people are walking and biking, and we're promoting that, and at the same time, we have to make sure that it's, it's safe.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, this is a time for the adoption of the agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda anybody wants to poll? And then move to, we go ahead and adopt the agenda? I want to put forward a motion for it, it's not necessary. Okay, we just go ahead. We're going to go into public hearings, a zone change from R10 single-family dwelling unit to R8 single-family dwelling unit for multiple properties located on Woodland Avenue, and I'll go to, I'll go to introduction by Tony Pococko.
Thank you, Mayor, evening Commissioners. Tonight, we are requesting continuance of Zone Change 1302 out on Woodlawn Avenue. The Planning Commission just held their hearing on Monday night, so we are requesting that this be continued to May 7, 2014. Prior to the continuance, if you'd like, we recommend take public testimony from any person interested in testifying tonight, and then leave the record open and continue to the date certain of May 7.
Well, go ahead and do that, because it is a, it is a noticed public hearing item. Do we, anybody that wishes to speak to this item may do so? I'll open the public hearing. There are none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion for continuance.
Can I ask a question before we do that, please?
Sure.
So, John, maybe you can refresh my memory about the sewer issue. Is Woodlawn Avenue in that bottleneck area? I know I can remember seeing Woodlawn, but I.
Yeah, Woodlawn is, is, they're parallel with, with the problem, but they're, they're off far enough to where their, their lateral comes, goes down Woodlawn.
So that's not an issue?
And ties in on Barker, which is downstream of this, of the problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion for continuance?
So moved, oh, she's, I got it, May 7th, but Kathy moved. I'll second it.
It's already moving for it, but anyway. So moved by Kathy Roth and seconded by Rocky Smith to continue the zone change from R10 single-family dwelling unit to R8 family unit for the properties located on Woodland Avenue. The vote, please. Okay, that passes unanimously. We have here next, the, moving into general business, the second reading of Ordinance 13-10-16, South End Concept Plan amending the Oregon City Comprehensive Plan. We've already had a public hearing for this, I don't know if we're required to have one. That require you may, if you wish. I think we'll just go ahead and ask if anybody wants to speak to this, and I'm just checking here to see if anybody's registered, so we, we will take, I'll just go ahead and open the public hearing if anybody wants to speak to it. We had several people speak to it before. Come ahead. Including Paul Hader.
Thank you, Mayor Neely, and commission members. Just want to remind you that I just, tonight earlier, I was reading of a zoning change out in Park Place, where they're going to, it'll come up on, I guess, on May 12th, but this is for a 29-house development, going from R10 to R8 on the fringe. And I just thought to myself, wow, they've got Holcomb, they've got a grade school right next to it, and lots of options, and here we are in South End Road, one road in, one road out, and we're going on 54% of the property, we're taking it to R2, R3. Ridiculous. Traffic considerations, traffic counts, and I could turn around and tell you a half a dozen other places where we could be taking and putting high density in more into the core of the town, where we have transit, where we have transportation options, and where it makes more sense, it's common sense. And I'm just asking you guys, really, to use a little bit of common sense here. We can, we don't have to go with R2, R3 on 54%, we have options. We can put higher densities where we can handle it, someplace else. This is an opportunity to find out whether or not common sense does prevail in this, with this commission. And I just hope that I see some. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have Christine Kozinski again.
Christine Kozinski, I live in unincorporated Clackamas County. Two weeks ago, I came before you with my concerns that the current steep slope and landslide regulations for the city are simply not as comprehensive as they should be. I presented emails from your city engineer, which stated that city staff was working with DOGAMI to create a landslide hazard susceptibility map indicating areas of low, moderate, and high susceptibility to landslides. The city engineer further stated that the public should expect two stages of code changes, with the second stage being a rewrite of the geologic hazards to implement the new risk-based maps that DOGAMI was developing. My testimony went on to question why the city currently only regulates slopes of 25% when GRI recommended 15%. Mayor Neely asked Oregon City staff about the concerns I had raised. The staff stated that this was the first they knew of these emails from the city engineer, and yet these emails indicate that copies were sent to all city staff, to all city commissioners and planners. I believe all the staff of Oregon City was aware that the engineer was planning to write stage two of the landslide regulations, but the city did not go forward. The city staff did state to Mayor Neely that they do monitor low, moderate, and high risk. However, I don't agree with this. If you are monitoring risk, it needs to be written into your regulations. If it's not written, it isn't being done. I continue to be concerned that further landslide regulations, as promised in 2008, were never written, and I sometimes wonder if the steep slope landslide regulations are actually used. An example of this is in July of last year. I gave testimony to this commission regarding development being proposed for property located as an, at an address labeled as 615 and 707 Fourth Avenue. I gave you a printout of the DOGAMI LiDAR map for this address, showing that this home would be located smack dab inside of a huge landslide, and that at some point it will reactivate. I asked, why would you allow this? And why are you still considering this for approval? This is what makes me wonder how committed the city is in supporting these important regulations. I am saddened at the fact that the commission will approve the South End Concept Plan tonight. In all the years I have been before you, all development somehow simply gets approved. I ask you, what is more important, the collection of STCs and property taxes, or the safety of your people? If you are dedicated to the safety of the people, then you will see to it that stage two of the steep slope landslide regulations are written and applied to both the South End Concept Plan and to all future development within your boundaries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any response? Okay, thank you. Now, do I hear a, any discussion?
This is.
Close the public hearing, sorry.
Oh, yes.
Go ahead.
This is second reading of the South End Concept Plan.
Final adoption.
And final adoption, but it's not the zoning.
This is the plan itself.
It's just the plan itself. So I will once again be a no vote, just so I'm consistent, and you know that. And that's my statement. Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I have a question about the stage two study. Is that being done or going to be done, or where's the status of that?
For the geologic hazards?
Yeah. What she was talking about, about the, the stage two, if part of it's been done and part of it hasn't been done, is it, was it determined that it didn't need to be done, or what's the status of that?
Well, as far as I know, the, the only thing we're doing is we're adopting the new DOGAMI maps, but we're not, we're not proposing any changes to our steep slopes code, so I'm not sure exactly what the stage two study was comprised of. I've never heard of it referred that way, but right now, we don't have code changes proposed for our geologic hazards.
And we're just working on the South End Concept Plan.
Right.
So, yeah. I think that that is a good point, that we should look at, maybe in a work session or something, for the whole city, not just.
Yeah, I think it might, I think it would be worth reviewing to make sure that our regulations are where they need to be.
Yeah.
It's always good to look things over, make sure.
If you wish to do that, let's get on, let's get that on the work session, and I have to be covered.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good.
Mayor, why don't I, why don't I look at it first, and find out, try to decipher what she meant, and what the status is, and then either put it on for work session or bring it back to you in my reports, a memo explaining the circumstances, and then you can decide. That way, at least, we'll have the background information.
Right. All right.
Do I hear a motion?
If you're of a mind to adopt, it would be a motion to, for second reading and final adoption of Ordinance Number 13-10-16.
Why? No, I'm gonna, what I probably am gonna request is that I, with the consent of the commission, I'll turn the gavel over to the president so I can make a motion.
Sure.
Is there a consent?
That's fine.
I think you can make a motion anyways.
No, I can't. I got a second one, but I can't make one. Is that legitimate?
Yes, just say so moved.
So moved.
Okay. So moved, is there, I'm gonna go ahead and move for the second reading, so ordinance 13-1016, South End Concept Plan, and final adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and approved, reading?
This is ordinance number 13-1016, an ordinance adopting the South End Concept Plan, adopting amendments to the Oregon City Comprehensive Plan, Comprehensive Plan map and its ancillary documents.
The vote. Oh, wait, wait, wait. I did the wrong one. That's the one. Okay.
Okay, three, three in favor and two opposed.
Thank you. Now, I'm gonna turn it back to the mayor.
My desk word. Anyway.
Well, I mean, just.
That's fine, that's fine.
So, are we gonna have open comments about the zoning issue?
The second reading of the ordinance.
You can.
Yeah.
Then I'll just wait.
Yeah, no, that's fine, because we permitted the comments from the public on the, on this one, too. I did for the next one. So, now before us is the second reading of ordinance 13-1017, adoption of the South End Concept Plan, implementing the zoning code. Again, any discussion before I open the public comments?
Just for me to be consistent, I will be voting yes on this, because I think the zoning codes can be amended as we move along. So, with that, I will make a motion to.
I'm gonna open it up to the public again. I don't have to, but I'm going to. Any public comment? Christina, Christine, I'm sorry.
Christine Kaczynski, unincorporated Clackamas County. I don't know if I can do this, but I was going to clarify some of my previous testimony for you, instead of sending you an email. If you will pull what I gave you two weeks ago, I gave you an email from 2007 and 2008. And in those emails, the city engineer set out the instructions for stage two of the landslide regulations, which would be to look at your slopes, your difficult areas, and mark them as low, moderate, or high risk. Certainly, if they're low risk, I don't believe anything would be indicated. If it's moderate, then some geological work needs to be done. But if they're high risk, then it would call for probably a full geotech report. But I didn't see that in your regulations. I went back and checked them this last time. And, you know, I guess I'm a firm believer, especially with government, if it's not written, it just won't get done. Thank you.
City manager indicates he's gonna research that for us and see where we said we would be and where we fact are.
Yeah.
So, you're gonna close?
I just want to remind the commission that we not only regulate based on a slope, zero to 15, 15 to 25, 25 to 35, 35 and above, that we also incorporated buffers around those slopes at both the toe and the top. And then we also incorporated historic landslides. We incorporated the LiDAR data that was available, and we put buffers around that as well. So, I just want to remind, you know, the commission of the work that we did last time, and that was associated with Park Place, that was a direct response and an implementation from the work that was done by an outside consultant to deal with some of the geologic hazard questions that had been raised. So, and at that time, some of these maps weren't available, they weren't done yet with the work that they were doing. So, and we had a discussion last time that there is a little bit of a difference between someone coming in for a subdivision today, of which we get to apply all the regulations that we have in place.
Right.
Versus a lot of record, of which you're potentially, you need to identify some economic feasibility use of that property, or we are taking it. And that's, that's the hard part.
Yes.
Sorry.
When you say you've applied buffers around the top and the toe, what determines these buffers?
Depending on where the break in the slope is, then we add, I think it's a 50?
50 and.
200 around the historic slides.
Pretty large.
So.
It doesn't fall consistent though with places that we're looking at for developing within the city?
Well, the buffer doesn't mean you can't build there. The buffer says you're close enough to the edge that we want a more detailed analysis of the geologic condition of the soils of where you're potentially gonna be building and if it's feasible to do. So, it's kind of like our stream buffers, you know, we've got a 50-foot buffer, even though the stream's here, we have a 50-foot buffer. It's the same concept.
And that was 2008, right? I mean, I think it was right.
When Park Place and Beaver Creek were being.
Nine, 10.
Right. But, I mean, that's when we started.
Making some of these more up-to-date changes, correct. And Miss Crushhour at the time was a big part of that, in making those changes and implementing those new mappings. And so then, on the historic landslides, where we would use the DOGAMI, and we would identify some of those underlying layers where historic landslides, where we put the 200-foot buffer on. So, essentially, we're saying, if you fall within there, even though it may be flat, it may be a 10% slope, it deserves additional scrutiny. So, just to give you a little bit of the progress that has been made throughout, throughout the years.
Right, right.
So, when they pull the permits, then they would have to have a study done at that time?
We have a checklist, a detailed checklist, that we go through and determine how much, I mean, it can vary, you know. One study may be very extensive, another study may be less. And we make that determination as to how extensive of a study we need, and they're pretty robust, and we can have a peer review of that study. So, we ask the developer to go through a study, and then we can charge that developer for the costs associated with doing a third-party peer review of yet another geotechnical analysis. Because we don't have a geotech on staff in our department, so.
Am I incorrect in saying that we actually have a list of consultants that are, a select list that the developer should choose from? It's not just a case of them going after anybody that was going to, I mean, that's the problem, that's the problem we had at New Acroest, and so they were getting developers, geotecs in there that were gonna do what they wanted developers to do.
We have a list that we can recommend. We can't force them to use it, but we do have the ability to use the third-party review of that, which then allows us to use the third-party review to rebut and apply that critical review to the work that's done. And if it's shoddy, it's shoddy, and it gets called out.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you're, I'm trying to figure out how to phrase this. Historically, what has been your breaking point for calling for geotechnical review? So, if you didn't do it on a lesser slope, say a 15% slope, historically, what was your criteria for doing the geotech?
Well, I think, you know, Nancy had some geotechnical background, and so she was making a lot of those decisions on her own. And when she decided, when she felt professionally why she was uncomfortable, she'd require a geotechnical analysis. Now, we're a lot more likely to require a geotechnical analysis and go through that checklist, because we don't have that expertise right now. So, we, you know, I, my tendency is gonna be to be very conservative. Now, these lots of record, I'm not sure about it. I know we have heard some things about the parcel in Kanema that, you know, my preference is to be able to bring on a geotech for that, and have them, or have the developer bring on a geotech, and then probably a peer review, if the code allows us to do that. And it may be more required through the building permit than it would be. There's no land use, so we'll see it in a site plan review, and at that point in time, I'll be talking to Tony to figure out, you know, how far we can go with our code to require those.
So, historically, it was based just on slope? So, we would take over 100 feet, what's the slope? Is it 26% or is it 18%? And then that was, that was the driver for a geologic hazard review, back, you know, until we started making these changes and adding these additional layers and these buffers and utilizing other DOGAMI maps. But then we also would look at, we'd utilize the DOGAMI hazard map, whether it be for high water table and those other resources that are, natural hazards that are out there.
So, my bottom line question is, if that's what it was historically, and we've moved forward now, is the criteria written? Or is that what we're going to be looking at?
We made, we made, we made changes to the criteria associated with Park Place when we also adopted those additional map overlays.
Okay. Criteria, as a newer reader of the code, to me seems very stringent.
Okay.
You know, I don't, I'm not sure about this high, medium, and low risk, but I think we get around that with the fact that if you're in the overlay, you know, we can make that determination, especially if we're concerned about.
Your overlays not overly now look at slope, but they look at soil types and?
No, our overlays look at slope, but there's these buffers that go beyond the edge of the slope, so.
So, you're not looking at soil type?
Well, the geotechnical analysis looks at soil type. If we know about soil type and concerns for that, for instance, if we know they're on bedrock, we might look at it a little differently than if we think they're on typical erosive soils that we might see in Noel Canyon or other places like that.
So, it's slope, and then it's taking active and historic landslides based on the LiDAR data? So, it's not soil type, it's saying, okay, here's the LiDAR data, we've seen we had a slump here at some point in history.
You're aware of the availability of that soil type evaluation throughout the whole state? I mean, you could look up any address and find it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have all eight here wishing to speak, come forward.
I'll thank you. As the land use chair of Kanema area, I've, for a lot of years, I've been tracking a lot of the houses that have been built in and around Kanema. There's two of them on, that were built on Fourth and Miller, on the south side, two houses on 600-square-foot lots. The slope is between 50 and 60%.
When were they built, Paul?
Since I've been land use chair. I, you know, and I'll come back, I can't tell you, but it's some, you know, about, let's say, eight years ago.
Something.
But, but the key to it is, these are over 50% slope lots, and immediately after the houses were built, they, there's in the code that says there's height limitations on the sides of the house. On the backside, the slope side, they're four stories, completely in violation of city code. The pillars to the back porches go up, and there's these great big view back porches that go down, they move six inches in less than one year.
Was that, is that like in Kanema, or is that?
That is in Kanema, on Fourth, between Fourth and Third, facing Fourth Avenue on Miller. And these houses, all I'm turning around and telling you, we've had code, and the code tells us different things. I've read 1744 many times. And we're not even watching it. We can comply with stuff, we can, we could, we even had a, the city code says for historic houses, we're not, in a national register district, we're not supposed to have metal roofs. All went right through the HRB, we protested, still went ahead. Somewhere along the line, somebody's got to manage the funny farm. And these events and these things that have been happening, I could take you around and show you place after place in Kanema, and enough is enough. And I get, you know, we can talk about the code, and we can talk about this or that, but we gotta be honest, it's not being watched over. Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan, am I correct?
Yes.
In that a neighborhood association can appeal to decisions to the city commission without actually paying the?
General, that's correct.
Yes.
I mean, frankly, if this was happening, then it's, and I question it was happening, but if it was happening, the neighborhood associations themselves can appeal decisions to the city commission.
Yeah.
They are generally not required to pay the required fees for, for those appeals. I mean, and you're aware of that mechanism?
Mr. Mayor, sometimes events like this come up, and when you're, you have, you don't have a scheduled meeting. You can't get concurrence of your neighborhood, and then with the real estate interests that are also in Kanema, they say, build, build, build. So, when you have a vote, you can't schedule it all the time to come along to coincide with everything. Even the last one that came up before you, I, we appealed, Howard Post as the chair and myself, we appealed one house that was referenced earlier by, but we had to pay it ourselves, because we couldn't schedule a meeting together to get concurrence. And when we tried to, some of the people said, well, why are you worried about it? It's just another house, and it enhances the neighborhood. And this one had a snorkel garage up and attached to the house, and you guys said, okay, it's fine. And it's on a landslide area, and we referenced it in our documentation to you, that the slope was greater than 25%. It's in the documentation that we presented to you, but you guys approved it yourself, even after we appealed it.
All right.
Okay, I think we're gonna have somebody else coming into the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, city commissioners, my name is William Gifford, and although this doesn't have particularly to do with the public hearing at hand, it does have to do with the process of how things are handled in a neighborhood association. Because, as you know, I've been involved in a lot of neighborhood associations, and I've worked on a lot of their bylaws. One of the things that I insisted on some of our bylaws, for example, Hillendale, is that because of this constriction of time, that Mr. Edgar correctly points out, you know that in advance. So, one of the things we put in our bylaws was that the executive committee, which is made up of the officers of the, of the association, have the authority to act in behalf of the entire neighborhood association without having to take the entire neighborhood association vote on the proviso, that any such decisions are attempted to reach the general membership by email at least, if not phone. So, if there is a time consideration for something like that, the executive committee can reach out, try to get a consensus from the neighborhood association, but in absence of that consensus, they can act on behalf of the neighborhood association, and that's in the bylaws. There are ways of getting things done in that timeframe.
Barclay Hills has the same kind of thing, so.
What a surprise.
There you go.
See, nobody else listed? Close the public hearing. A question, if, let's say, let's say somebody's made a application for the building of a house, it predates, it predates some of our, some of the codes that we put on, but the application was already there, what happens? The application's been approved, but it hasn't been, but it hasn't been acted on, and it was approved at a period of time before we had codes that regulated that particular parcel.
So, I don't understand. We approved an application for development?
Subdivision.
We approved a subdivision prior to adoption of our code.
Right.
It would still go through.
Not to get too wonky here, but we would have approved it. In order for it to be in place, they would have had to record the plaque, because it's been more than, or, so, land use approval is three years. So you either need to get it approved, get it built, or put up surety and record the plaque. So at that point, I can't think of a situation in the city right now where we have that, that would be that old, but you'd be entitled to the land use.
Regulations that you were approved under.
Correct.
Right.
You can't go back and change the rules after you've approved it.
Even when we started this in 2008, I mean, there was, still could have been houses being built, 2009, 2010, and for this exact reason, that's, yeah.
Yep.
But you fixed the problem.
And that's a question, I mean, I don't recall a specific appeal, so I can't say anything about it, but there are situations in which something can be built after we've adopted the code because it was approved prior to the code's adoption.
I think, I think the, you know, when you're talking about Kanema, you're talking about lots that are 100 and some years old.
Yes, I understand that.
Right.
You know, so the difficulty there is someone has a 50 by 100 foot lot, and Ed, if I'm correct, I mean, you either need to allow them to build something somewhere on that lot, or it's a taking, for the most part, unless it, I mean, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Generally, that's true. And, you know, the issue is whether there is a discretionary land use regulation that is applicable. For subdivisions, yes, that's by its nature discretionary, you put conditions on those things. If you've got a single building permit, all you've got is the building code. Unless you have something in the ordinance that says they can't get a building permit, which does risk the taking issue, then you can't do anything about it. And you're stuck.
I would assume some of these arguments were put forward perhaps on the appeal, but I don't know, the appeals aren't really common.
It was on the HR, it was on the historic review matter, not the geologic hazard matter.
Yeah.
Oh, it didn't come, it didn't come, it didn't come to us.
There were, there were discussions about slope, but the issue was on the design of the home.
Right. Because it was the, yeah.
It was the historic review board's decision. Historic review board doesn't look at geologic hazards, it's not their purview.
The appropriate body of guarantee is the planning commission on that?
No, it would be a staff decision that's appealable to the city commission.
So it could have been appealed to us on the slope issue?
The unstable slopes report.
That's not what was appealed to us.
Correct, the historic review board decision was appealed to you. What I'm recalling in terms of what the last appeal that you held.
That's the one with the garage was attached and then, yeah, I remember.
Yep. Okay, do I entertain a motion?
I will move to, for the second reading and final adoption of ordinance number 13-1017.
Second.
So moved by Commissioner Mum, seconded by Congressman Roth, a vote please.
Yep, I gotta read it.
Did it again.
This is ordinance number 13-1017, an ordinance adopting revisions to the Oregon City Municipal Code to implement the South End Concept Plan.
Votes are four in support and one against. Thank you. We'll go on to our consent agenda, which would actually, a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Moved by Commissioner Mum, seconded by Commissioner Roth, a vote please. Any analysts? Then we'll go on to the, we'll go on to the city managers' report.
Thank you, Your Honor. First up tonight, Nancy, I, our city recorder, has a correction to the resolution, some resolution numbers that she wants to put into the record.
Yes, and just for the record, I'd like to announce a correction to resolution number 14-05. You approved it at the last meeting, and there were two 1405s on the agenda, and so I just corrected that. The resolution establishing eligibility to receive state shared revenues formerly 14-05 is now 14-07.
Thank you very much.
For the record.
Yes, thank you.
We don't have to blow on it.
That's correct.
Very good.
And Your Honor, you also mentioned earlier that Parbor Day and the City Cleanup Day coincided in the same day, and that's April 26th. Again, we are meeting at 8:30 a.m. at Clackamas Park. Any citizens or interested people that want to come, please join us there. We, I think we've done this every year, but I've been here and even longer, so we look forward to a good turnout that day, and hopefully we'll have good weather for the event as well. And then last on my report, John Lewis has a water quality education program that he wants to describe to the commission and share with the community.
Nancy, can you put down the screen?
Sorry.
So, last time we met, had bad news with the sewer master plan, so I thought I better bring some good news or have our patients.
That's good.
So I really did just want to talk about our water quality education program, and it was timely because yesterday we, we had staff that were, attended an event over at the Clackamas Community College where there was, well, I don't know what there was this time, but typically there's four, 500 fourth and fifth grade students that go through that program and get a chance to see kind of water quality, river health kind of thing. So I thought maybe I'd go through this real quick. There's a couple of things that I think are interesting to report. First of all, we are required through our NPDS permit to provide public education and outreach, and we think the youth is our, is our most potential for, you know, getting that information. But we also, you know, we've got other ways and other outreach materials that reach adults as well. These are regulatory requirements, but they're also kind of fun things to do, so we've kind of come around to liking them. One of the things that we heard when we had the water rate discussions was, you know, our water quality report almost looks too nice, right? And so it's kind of a waste. So this year we're moving towards a online version. We will still have some printed copies of that, but we're not planning to send it to every resident in town. So, and we've got water conservation programs, we've still got the cross connection and backflow prevention program, those are successful programs, lead and copper and the testing that goes along with that, we've been successful. We had some problems with that, but to be quite honest with you, it was because we were sampling and combining our samples with some of our neighboring jurisdictions who had problems with lead and copper and some of the pipelines, and we've since been able to kind of bifurcate ourselves from some of those other.
Nice word.
Peoples or agencies, so. You know, we do a lot to manage stormwater. We've got a couple, there's a study that's, macro invertebrate study that's out right now that's online, it's completed, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute, but we're also working on a pesticide study. We're doing that with some of our other partners in the region, and we've got many partners in the region. But, you know, anything from erosion control, which is probably our most, our best success program, if we can catch, prevent erosion before it happens and gets to this point, like you're seeing here in front of this catch basin, we're a lot better off. Also illicit discharges, things like sewer connections to, to the stormwater system that we, we don't find many of those anymore. So we, we do a lot of things, we use Trail News, if you pay attention to that, there's typically an article about stormwater, utility bill inserts, I won't go through all of these, but we do a lot of things to try to share the good news of stormwater management in Oregon City. Catch basin stenciling, we've, we're planning this year again to do the farmer's market. We're here at the commission meeting to tell you a little bit about it, and kind of, I think there's a lot of things that we're doing that you may hear about from time to time. So these are some of our partners, Clackamas Community College, Coin, Channel 6, the Do the Right Thing campaign, I don't know how many of you watch Channel 6, but they've got a website that you can see a lot of the, the short commercials that they do about washing cars and picking up dog waste, those kind of things that people can do little things at home to improve water quality in their, in their neighborhoods. And last, I know I want to be quick with this, but I'm not going to go into detail, but we just finished this macro invertebrate assessment, which is really, for those of you who don't know, it's really counting bugs. They're checking the health of your stream by looking for critters that look something like that. And we've, we've partnered with the city of Gladstone, city of Lake Oswego, city of Milwaukee, West Lynn, and Wilsonville, and I just thought I would share with you because I know how competitive you all are.
Yes.
We sampled, we sampled two city streams, Singer Creek and Coffee Creeks. Thank you, Paul. So I got to, and I didn't study all these results, I'll tell you that much, but I got down to the bottom and they have these, these rating systems for, for streams, and there's non-disturbed, slightly disturbed, moderately disturbed, and severely disturbed. I like that.
Is this like the list of PTSD?
These are for, these are the streams, they are the streams. But, but there might be a correlation here, so. So, you know, just know, and I won't go through each of these, but I wanted to find, our streams are, the two streams that we sampled are by far the best. In fact, Coffee Creek was, was, fell into the slightly disturbed area, so, just, just, has nothing to do with, you know, who lives there or, or, that kind of thing. It's got something to do with just water quality. So I'm gonna, I'm keeping, I'm trying to get through here to find ours, 'cause, now, Lake Oswego has, you know, just to let you know, they've got severely disturbed creeks in their.
Of course they do.
And West Lynn, not that we're pointing fingers at anybody, but I'm gonna take a stab, they've got, they've got very severely disturbed streams, but, but Oregon City, Coffee Creek, there we go, is slightly disturbed, so, and, and that was true pretty much for, I think they fell right on the line between slightly and moderately disturbed for our Singer Creek. So the good news is, is our river, our creek health, especially in areas that are urbanized, where you're gonna see a lot of pollution from, from lawn care products and soaps and things like that, our streams are, were better than anybody else in the county. So we're less disturbed, so that's all I wanted to say.
Yay.
I appreciate your including a name like Coffee Creek because that has certain implication. I'm wondering why you didn't choose Mud Creek as your example?
Well, we selected those.
I'm gonna make a comment, I've, I've been extremely, I use South End road more than I used to, and as I go up there, even after, surely after major storm events, it's amazing to me how clear that water coming down the waterfall is.
Yes.
Singer Creek, self, every time's pretty muddy after a storm event, but Coffee Creek, I'm just amazed at how clear that water is. I don't know if people know it, but it, I know it goes as far up as Chapin Park, and it's, and in various places, it's, it's an open stream, other places it's not, but there are various property owners that do have Coffee Creek open in their backyards and so forth, so that might be, might be part of the explanation too, that it's not as flashy because maybe, maybe not as much stormwater is going into it as some of our other streams.
I think it is. They're short streams, I guess the other piece is while it comes over a, a very steep, steep slope, it's a bedrock steep slope, so, you know, it's, there's not a lot of erosive soils that come through the Kanema area, they're bedrock, so that, you know, that's a, that's a difference.
Very good.
That's it, sorry.
That concludes my report this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you. There are a lot of meetings that I do attend that, I'm next on, that I do attend that I never report on, but there's been two rather important ones that I did want to talk about. The, we do have, well, we got two sets of meetings, two times a month. One is the regional mayor's meeting, and the other one is the Small Cities Consortium, both of them are hosted by Tualatin. Usually the mayor's meeting is a gripe session about metro, regional government, and, and that really got triggered by a particular event, I'm just gonna go back a little bit in history. When we had the levy that was voted on by the metro regional government and passed region-wide, there was complaints that really the, the metro advisory committee, which I serve on representing the second largest city, was never really consulted about it. And there was a feeling that, that the metro regional government wasn't really coming to the, through the appropriate process in terms of getting advice on some of those items. I'm going to say that's changed dramatically in the last year, and part of it, I think, has to do with this regional mayor's meeting. But I wanted to speak specifically about the Small Cities Consortium. We had a presentation this last time, actually the last two times, by Greater Portland Inc. And this is a, this is a group that looks at what kinds of clusters in the metro region should we be emphasizing from a, a marketing standpoint. And they did a polling throughout the metro region to find out what the major clusters are, they were identifying four of them, clean technology, traditional advanced technology, athletic and outdoor gear apparel, and computer electronics and software were the major clusters. Out of those, they're selecting two of them to put a great emphasis, emphasis on traditional and advanced technology and computer electronics and software. The reason I'm bringing this up is that this is a core indication of the dominance of Multnomah County and Washington County in these particular surveys. Of those four, and I, this is thanks to Eric Underwood, of these four, the only cluster that we have in the county is the traditional advanced technology, and we have some industries located in Oregon City which fall into this cluster. We have a total of 10 clusters, but in the county, and I'm talking about in the county, but only one of them fits into this, into this example. So the last meeting that we were at, Oregon City was asked, and, and also Wilsonville was asked, you know, what, what did we have? And it was clear in our discussions that really the Greater Portland Inc. was not really addressing the kinds of clusters that we had in, in our area. I listed, I listed the, the ones that we had in Oregon City, and then Mayor Nap took a great deal of time to tell whatever, whatever cluster was and what every business was in that cluster to indicate how important they were to the economy of West Lynn. Our hope is this will drive Portland, Greater Portland Inc. to really represent the Greater Portland area, including Clackamas County.
Absolutely.
So that's one of the, that's one of the meetings I was involved in. The other one was Metro brought together JPAC, which if I have this right is the Joint Policy Advisory Committee on Transportation, and the other is the one that I serve on the Metropolitan Policy Advisory Committee. For the most, in fact, for I think almost all the cases, there are different representatives to these meetings. They had, they had the stakeholders meeting that involved all the members of it, in which we were discussing the climate smart communities and where the emphasis should go. Now I need to explain this, the state, the state government has mandated a certain percentage decrease in, in greenhouse gases by a given year, and they focused all their attention on transportation to reduce this. Now, believe it or not, transportation is not the major, is not the majority contribution to greenhouse gases, but they focused on transportation. And over more than a year, Metro has been looking at the kinds of things, kinds of issues that we ought to be looking at. They had, they identified six different categories to look at in terms of mechanisms of, of dealing with the transportation, and we had various round tables in which this was being discussed. We all did one of these, you know, you put your circles on your choices, and my, as I recall, there were actually seven increases in each one of these. We were given the indication of what it would cost and the effectiveness of it, and I'm gonna mention very quickly what the, what the six categories are. They were investments in transit, technology, and we're talking as a smart technology in terms of, of controlling traffic speed, signalization, getting people onto other roads and so forth if there's an accident, and getting the, getting services to accidents quicker, travel, travel information programs, planned active transportation network, planned street and highway network, and parking management. The, it turned out, and this wasn't true of all the tables, but it turned out our table had all Clackamas County representatives, the mayor from, Mayor Nap from... had all Clackamas County representatives, the mayor from, Mayor Naff from Wilsonville was at our table, as was the, as was, as was Counselor Jordan from Lake Oswego, she rep, they are both on the J-PAC group, myself, Counselor Colette, and, we're all from Clackamas County. We all did our independent scoring, and then we put it on a common sheet that was ultimately turned into the whole group. Ours kind of mirrored what the overall average was for all the tables, where we thought the greatest emphasis should be in the seven-step category system, the greatest emphasis should be on smart technology, that is, we seemed to get the biggest bang for the buck there. The next high-ranking ranking one was, was, was the issue of transit, but actually it didn't rank that much higher than the third one and so forth. The one that ranked third highest was parking management, but the variation in the responses there was greater than in any other, and I presume that's because different communities see track, parking, it is a different priority and depending on what they work. This is the first step in the process, and we'll be having another meeting in, in, in May to actually hone down on these, but the, the, a broad consensus, we're dealing with, with the technology of getting cars to move efficiently and so forth was the greatest thing. And I think it was because the general realization that although public transportation is very important, the fact is we are strongly a car culture.
Yes.
And that's not going to change dramatically for a generation or two. The other thing that I was invited to, there's a group called the, the Crew Group, and it's a group of women commercial realtors that meet on a monthly basis, and they invited the mayors of Gresham, Toawalton, Oregon City to speak on what, what their opportunities were there. Of course, I focused a great deal on, on what's happening at Clackamas Cove, what's happening at our legacy project, the opportunities that might come forward in terms of further development on Main Street. Also spoke on the importance of the bond that Clackamas Community College is going to be putting forward in November.
Right.
That'll be expanding other programs, nursing and so, but expanding their manufacturing piece that is on their main campus, and the importance of the, the, of the, of the industrial land zoning that we have in that area, and looking at the possibility of how that might in fact stimulate development on our Seven Street Beaver Creek and Mulhalla Corridors, which we're, which we put great emphasis on in our last comp plan. So, so that's my report. So can I start, start at the extreme left again and work my way right?
Sir, sir, I just have a few things. I did want to mention real quick, great news about one of our officers, Cynthia Gates, she had a kidney transplant and is doing well. We went on Mayor Neely and I and several of the library board, several other people went on a library tour, and had, had great fun, got lots of really good concrete ideas of how different cities have envisioned their library. We went up to Vancouver, Camas, and then Hood River where they're at, they actually did in addition to a Cardi E library, so that was great. And, in addition to that, Wednesday, April 30th, there is a library expansion, open house at the library, so I invite everybody to come. There's so many things on the calendar right now, so check out the city's calendar.
Yeah, absolutely.
Some of them could be conflicting too.
There are so, there are so many things, there's that, April 29th is Envision Newell Creek at the Pioneer Community Center, of course Earth Day, we talked about that, the Willamette Falls Legacy Project Open House is April 21st, so please, again, you know, look at, look at the city's website on the calendar to see all the, all the very important events coming up. As far as, I'll put my Main Street hat on now, the committees are going well, getting lots of people involved, we are looking at hiring a rare, entering the rare program, so hiring an AmeriCorps participant to do a lot of work, to do a lot of projects, so this is a very financially responsible way to get work, to get work done, and partner again with organization where they are training as a master's level candidate.
Nice.
So we're gonna get some good work for a good value, and looking forward to lots of good things going on down there.
Yay.
Very good.
Thank you.
Ms. Ralph?
Yes, I've got a few things. We met as a neighborhood, McLaughlin neighborhood, a few weeks ago, I don't know if any of you remember, but the Local Harvest 2020, and they did the community garden and some things. So we weeded and cleaned up the crescent at Mount Pleasant School, this a couple weeks ago, and it was a real mess, and then all of our watering systems that we put in ourselves, somebody ripped out.
That's ours.
But anyway, it, it looked very nice, and, and I felt it for about four days, it was a lot of work. Then, the next thing I went to was called the City Repair, and it's the building convergence, village building convergence fair, which will be in Portland, May 23rd through June 1st, and this is an effort that's trying to rebuild or re-envision communities in Portland, but they're trying to spread beyond Portland. Portland actually has 75 of these communities right now going on, I don't know if anybody's familiar with Sherrett Square, that was the first one in Portland, but what they're doing now is they're taking down houses, they're taking down fences between houses, building pathways through yards, and it's really quite interesting what they're doing. So this will be down, gosh, it doesn't say where it's going to be, but they've got a website, so there's, there's that, so I went to that one. And then I tried to go in disguise the other night to West Lynn, but I got recognized.
What was your disguise?
You spied.
A dog.
That's not a disguise.
Not disguised as a dog?
No, not as a dog.
She always has her dog.
Okay.
I walked over there to West Lynn, and they were, they were having their first charrette on re-envisioning what's going to happen to Highway 43 between Bolton School and the bridge, so all eight of us.
Which bridge?
Arch Bridge.
Our bridge.
The Oregon City.
Oregon City, West Lynn Bridge.
Yeah, Bolton School and the bridge. There were only eight people, including me, there were more people on the design team than there were. So it was kind of a, a bad turnout, but some very, very concerned people, and my spying was trying to find out what they want to do, so it, I did learn that they've got a hotel envisioned for over there.
Oh, sure.
And 600 housing units in that little bit of space.
Yeah.
That really was upsetting people, because 43 is, right now they're, let's see, 205 Bridge is transporting 87,000 cars a day southbound, 43 at that junction where you come off of 205 has got 27,000 cars, and so they're not seeing how you could put 600 more housing units in, in that short span, and then ODOT wants to put a median down the middle so there's no left turns.
Mm-hmm.
So it wasn't a very happy crowd.
We can walk across the bridge to all our businesses downtown.
Yeah, there you go.
Actually, someone suggested that they put a parking, because the police station is leaving, so that they put a parking lot at the police stations where people could walk to downtown Oregon City. That didn't go over real well.
Oh, I imagine. Great idea. I love it.
And I thought it was kind of strange that they tore down the only hotel that was over there, and now they're thinking of putting one back, so, oh wow, yes.
That was it.
Ms. Smith?
A couple things.
The ghosts, or?
Yeah, I'll say a little bit about it, I, I'm still trying to catch up, up on sleep, I was up Friday night till 1:30 and, like, Saturday night till 3:00, 3:00 a.m., and so hosted the Oregon Ghost Conference in Oregon City for the third time, it was hugely successful. We had people from St. Helens, Seattle, Tacoma, Port Gamble, Salem, Medford, all over Portland. We have, we don't keep track of exactly how many people come into the conference, I do know that we had over 40 hotel rooms booked at the Riverside Hotel, we had, you know, I would say anywhere from five, 500 or so people come in and out, that doesn't count, speakers and about 40 organizations that were part of this with booths, and, and we had somewhere over 150 people on tours on Friday and Saturday night, and so if you went to a restaurant on Friday, Saturday night in Oregon City and you didn't know what was going on, that's what was going on. And people were everywhere, so it was very successful, we did a cemetery tour as well, got a lot of people through into Oregon City, and, but I also, I usually have once, we have speakers all day and all, all evening and then, then tours. And on Sunday, I, I took my time to speak instead of talking about ghosts this time, because everyone else was, obviously, but I, I, I know that a lot of these people have come into Oregon City from all over the west coast, some, some of them, many of them the last two years, and I wanted to kind of update them on, on what, what's happening in Oregon City, because a lot of them came in and said, you know, they couldn't believe what was happening, and couldn't believe how Oregon City has changed just in the last year or two. So I had an hour on Sunday to speak to an audience and, and talked about, kind of updates the last year for some of the building things, projects, you know, some of our facilities projects that we're doing, Irma Tinger House, which is a big interest, the Willamette Falls Project, which was, you know, something that most people found really exciting, talked about some of the listings that we were working on with Historic Register, stuff like that, so really kind of focusing on the city, the city's history and tourism. I had all these speakers scheduled throughout the whole weekend, and they all sent me their biographies, and I posted them, we had authors and, and TV personalities from reality TV shows and various things, and when I got up to, to welcome everyone on Friday night, I confessed that I'd only changed one biography, I edited it, and it was a biography not of a person, but of representing St. Helens, Oregon. So we got into this, this debate, because in their, in their write-up for St. Helens, they called St. Helens the most haunted city in Oregon. I modified that by saying one of the most. So that, that got a reaction and a discussion about that, and there's definitely other cities that, that pitched in on this discussion, because how do you measure such a thing? I'm not really sure. I wasn't willing to claim that they were, so the, one of the good friends of ours from Port Gamble, Washington, who also, both St. Helens, I don't know if you know, St. Helens does a whole festival, Halloween Festival, they do ghost tours, in fact, they've hired their marketing person for the city that completely, who had no interest in Halloween or ghosts when he got hired there, and they said, this is what we need to do. It has brought a lot of people into their town. Port Gamble, which is a mill-owned town up in Washington, beautiful city, little teeny town where all the houses and buildings are late 1800s, it looks like you're on a movie set in that place, it's a great, they also have a big ghost conference in, in October. So they were all saying, well, you know, Port Gamble said they're the most haunted city in Washington, I said, well, that's okay, you can say that. I didn't have, I didn't have a problem with that. So anyway, it, it was, you know, a lot of humor, a lot of, lot of just great fun, good friends coming into town, and, and I think a lot of people spent money in Oregon City, and, and it was a good, good event. And we hope to keep it in Oregon City, it's the third year and it's, we're, we've been holding it at the Pioneer Center, and it's beyond capacity at this point, so we, we hope to try to figure out a way to keep this in Oregon City. The other thing, so I, I'm finally catching up on sleep from that, and realized that I'm about two weeks till my next big event, which is the Pioneer Family Festival and the Oregon City Teddy Bear Parade. The Oregon City Teddy Bear Parade is on May 3rd, the Pioneer Festival is on the 2nd, 3rd, and 4th, Clackamas Park, the Lions Club stepping up and doing a lot of the work for the parade this year, and, and really taking ownership on that, which has helped me a lot. The Optimists Club is still, of course, doing the Pioneer Festival, and, so that'll be coming up, and then feel more, a little bit more time, and then I have summer break for a little bit, and I can take a break. But, yeah, it's, it was, it's been a lot of fun, but exhausting.
Lot of work.
Thank you. Chief Van, you know, we were talking earlier this evening, and I'd like to have you talk a little bit about the donation of the, of the kidney, if you would, I think it was a, kind of a neat story.
I was wondering how you're gonna have me follow up ghosts. The, and I, I'm gonna get some facts wrong here, but I, I think the story's, so, as you know, Cynthia Gates has, has been looking for a kidney, there have been things on the news, and my understanding is that they, who ended up being the donor, has a child who learned at school about the need that somebody in our city had for a kidney, and this amazing woman, who I believe is actually a physician, and has donated some other organs to people, heard about this, got tested, turned out to be a fantastic match, complete stranger, and donated a kidney, the surgery was, went extremely well, both are recovering, and it's gonna be a long process, Sergeant Gates is gonna be out for a little while, and we'll miss her, but she is always, we always have to, we kid her about forging doctor's notes so she can come back to work early, because she's such a hard worker, and so, we're really excited to get Cynthia back on the street and have her back in the office.
Awesome. Yeah, that's great.
Thank you. I don't have any appointments to make, do I?
No.
Very good. We do, we do, we, I, I wanted to say that we, we in fact had all our advisory committees filled, however, two, two people had to leave their positions, and, but we're having some final interviews coming up, and I think probably in, perhaps a month, I will be able, a little bit more than a month, I will be able to tell you that all the positions on our advisory committees are full. I'd like to extend the appreciation for the people coming out from Redland, not only for making their presentation, but to stick it out through our, our meetings. Now, I will, I will tell you, I will tell you, we're actually getting out earlier than we usually do, so you came to one of our shore of hands.
Yes.
As long as somebody lets me hit the gavel and close the meeting, may I do so?